All right, can you hear us, Sheila?
Yes, I can, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Uh, the time is now seven oh four PM and I will call this meeting to order. Maybe I'll roll call, please.
Mayor Rieckel?
Here.
Pro Tem Hennerhand?
Here.
Trustee Brettenall?
Here.
Trustee Claussen?
Here.
Trustee Flores?
Here.
Trustee Poston?
Here.
Trustee Seifert?
Here.
All right, maybe I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, be seated. The first item on tonight's agenda is public comments. Persons desiring to make a public comment on items not on the agenda, please activate the raised hand function in the meeting program. Or Sheila, do we have any phone calls or emails in regards to non-agenda items?
We did not have any, and I also do not see any raised hands tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have anybody sign in here in the chambers?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. Uh, then we'll move right along. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, which contains the minutes of the June 12th, 2023 Board of Trustees Meeting. Do you like to discuss that or make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the minutes from the June 12th, 2023 Board Trustees Meeting.
No second.
Uh, motion by Trustee Seifert to approve the minutes of the June 12th, 2023 Board Trustees Meeting on the consent agenda that was seconded by Trustee Claussen. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Uh, do any board members have any conflicts of interest with any agenda items tonight?
Nope.
None here.
None here.
And I've got none. Uh, any agenda changes by staff or by the board?
We don't have any, Mr. Mayor.
Nothing.
Nothing from the board? All right. Uh, then we'll move on to the next item, which is the new lodging and entertainment liquor license application for Rizlinda F. and B. LLC. This is a public hearing and I will turn this over to Deputy Town Clerk Malsbury.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, trustees.
Evening.
Um, the applicants are here tonight. Rizlinda, um, F. and B. LLC have submitted an application for a lodging and entertainment liquor license. Um, I'm gonna give you a little background and if you have any more questions, I'll invite the applicant up here. Um, their intention is to, um, book with a third party and have a lunch and dinner service on the proposed location off of the river. They have submitted all of the necessary documents and they are all also doing a concurrent license with the state, which means we've already sent everything into the state pending your approval. Um, the petition, the survey petition that went around, um, we did businesses, excuse me, they did businesses and residential. There was a ninety-one percent in favor of, um, them getting the liquor license. Um, let me see what else. Uh, I did speak to Chief Kite. Um, we went over any security measures or he has visited the property. So as of right now, as it stands, staff is, uh, recommending approval. Okay. Do you have any questions for me?
I actually, I do. I've got one question for you. Is this for a single event or a certain term?
They will have different events and from my understanding, they're going to, again, work with this third party. Um, the Patreons will book with a rafting trip and I will explain that too. They will drop them off. They will serve the dinners, luncheons, that booking through this third party right now. They will not be entering the river again afterwards. They will leave from the property.
Okay. But there will be multiple events? So this liquor license is good for several different dates?
This is a normal liquor license, yes.
So the third party is holding the liquor license?
No.
Rizlinda wants to hold the liquor license for a third party serving the business?
The third party, the only thing that they have to do with it at this moment is that they're booking the dinners or the luncheons with the rafting trip right now.
So they're bringing the clients?
They're bringing the clients in to them.
And then Rizlinda is providing the food?
Rizlinda is only handling the food.
And the liquor?
Correct.
Okay.
So the third party rafting trip has nothing to do with the dinner or the liquor license?
So they're not bringing liquor down with them? It's Rizlinda's, is it like a established joint?
It will be served right from the property.
Any other questions for our Deputy Town Clerk?
No, I don't have any. Okay. Pretty straightforward.
Since the applicant's here, would you guys, do you have anything you'd like to add to the discussion? All right, sure, jump on up here.
I'm sure they can explain.
I think we got a good gist of what's going on.
Yeah, it sounds pretty basic.
Yeah. Uh, Mr. Mayor, Board of Trustees, my name is Adam Stapen, S.T.A.P.E.N. I'm an attorney licensed to practice law in the great state of Colorado. My registration number is two seven five zero six. I apologize for the suit, but it's old habits die hard. And this is what I've done for twenty-eight years and I always wear a suit. So I apologize if I feel a little overdressed. It has nothing to do with anything other than just who I am and what I do. Obviously, you know Cole and Mitchell. What I'd like to do, if possible, is just allow Mitchell to give a little bit of a background of kind of what this project looks like and what is intended there. And then Cole will kind of get into the actual operation of that. And you are correct, this is a permanent liquor license for this space, but it will not be utilized all the time. It will be utilized when events are happening, which is why we're doing a lodging and entertainment class of license. Um, but Mitchell, why don't you just, again, you know these folks better than I know these folks. Why don't you give a quick background of kind of the overall project and what's going on there?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, trustees, good to see you all again. Trustee Poston, good to meet you. Uh, so, um, Lori, Lori had, uh, about eighty percent of it right. Only that there's more.
Okay.
Only that there's more. So, um, so, you know, we've been in front of you guys now for two years, believe it or not, working through the different phases and steps of everything. This, um, is, you know, having a liquor license is absolutely a part of us being able to deliver the vision that we've been giving you guys for, for this two years now. So where we are right now, we're gonna be back in front of you guys, I think September, probably with the final plat, right? And then that'll be the final sort of checkmark from you guys that will allow us to financially transact on the land. Because Dennis Carruth wants to keep three acres. We have nothing to divide until we're legally dividable, right? And so that final plat has to happen. He'll keep his three. The rest, the rest of it will go to Cole and, and me and we'll be able to actually move forward with engineering and stuff like that. In the meantime, we want to take advantage of, of the beautiful space down there, of the river, of the proximity of our brand, uh, that we're trying to build. Um, and, uh, toward that, um, we've created a space down there right off of the water. If you're, if you're driving and you'll see all of the straw bales down there, it's behind the straw bales. We've done that to kind of block sound of, off I-70 and a, and a little bit of the, the sight and, and stuff from, from I-70. But, but behind those straw bales is sort of the space that we're, that we're creating. Um, we have, uh, a small portfolio of sort of operational offerings for, for this summer. So let me talk about just 2023 for a second. We are partnering with Defiance Rafting Company out of, out of Glenwood. And, and Lori had it, had it perfectly right. The guests book with, uh, with the rafting company. It's a very nice, you know, they put in West Glenwood or, or South Canyon or somewhere. They float down. It's not meant to be Class Five rapids or anything, but they float down. They come out on our property. We greet them with a really nice picnic, you know, lunch or a really nice dinner. The food and the, you know, the, the beverage license would, would go along with, with that food. Um, they would then, you know, have their, have their lunch, get back into Defiance's vans and go back up valley, right? That's sort of how that package would, would work. And they would, and Defiance would continue to use your guys' put-in at the dog park, at the town park there across the river. The, the, the others kind of additional, right, additional to the rafting is that we want to host our own events this summer, right? We want to be able to put a call out, uh, social media or otherwise that we want to do a nice dinner next Friday night, right? Please RSVP. We're not gonna be open to the public, right? We're not gonna open up those gates and put a call out and say, look, if you're, if you, if you're interested, stop by. That's not our business operations for this year. It's, it's really about private, small, contained events. Uh, events that allow us to showcase what it is that we do down there. Space, atmosphere, experience, food, beverages, hospitality. To get the word out, I want people buzzing. We want people buzzing about how great Rizlinda is and that, you know, that they can't wait for us to build our brick and mortar. Um, and that's the whole sort of intent for 2023. Twenty-four, we'll talk about that at another time, right? When you get, when we have like site plans and all of those sorts of details in front of you. But for 2023, that's really sort of the idea. We're gonna be using, um, Carly Webb's food truck. It's the, it's that Two Forks food truck, right? I think a lot of you guys, uh, visited her at Hay Day's last year, right? Um, she's gonna be parked down on our site. It's gonna be permanent and immobile. And she's gonna be sort of the, the, the hub of that, of the food and beverage operations because we need a permanent, a permanent site down there. Um, I'm working with planning committee to get approvals for a small shed down there because we're gonna need some storage. Outside of that, there's no development. There's nothing permanent going on. Um, I've rigged up some, some cables so that we can put out a canopy. I've got some lawn chairs down there. I've got a nice fire pit with a screen on it, right? So that, that we're not, um, uh, posing any fire danger. Uh, but other than that, it's very light. It's very flexible. It's very, um, easy and completely designed just to get us started, um, so that we're set up for future years. My final point is that the, given your guys' approval this evening, this liquor license will be the liquor license that we use for the permanent brick and mortar event center. Right? So it will transfer and stay on.
We'll have to come back.
We'll come back. We'll have to get all of those, you know, all of the adjustments and everything approved, but it will be that, uh, for that event center. Any questions, guys, on the, on the vision or how this fits into the, to the bigger plan?
Uh, so your intention is later on make it more of a permanent event center?
Yes.
That you, okay, so, but then you're building yourself up for that?
Yeah.
And you're just leveraging the other companies so you can start up and build revenue, possibly, right? It sounds fun to me, like, it sounds fun to have something like this in Silt. That would be one of the things that can increase attraction for people to come into town. I, I like the idea and I like the presentation.
What are your proposed use cases for the events? Who are you going to be reaching out to for these limited events this summer? Are you thinking weddings or social groups, et cetera?
Weddings would be awesome, right? Because it's a lot of heads and it's a lot of revenue, but weddings take a lot, a lot longer for them to sort of get their act together, right?
That's what I was asking.
Um, so we had, uh, we're trying to be in the events or in the wedding business, probably for 2024, right? Um, this year, it's probably a, a lot of sort of structured happy hour type scenarios, right? Where we put the call out and it's, you know, it's thirty folks. It's, maybe it's, um, you know, the Kiwanis Club out of Glenwood. Maybe it's the, you know, it's, it's you guys and your plus ones. Maybe it's, you know, so we're, we're trying to reach out up and down the valley and, and just open ourselves up for sort of these small, focused, limited engagements. Um, we're looking at probably thirty to fifty people maximum, probably twenty-five to thirty more is that sweet spot. Um, maybe a birthday party, maybe, uh, you know, some sort of, um, anniversary celebration, but I think the big weddings, the big things is probably in the future.
So I would say I want to clarify a couple of things. One is, is the, the public nature of it is, when he says private, I think it's just RSVPing because of the, the capacity of the place, right? Like, we don't have the equipment or the seating to do anymore, so we would want to do a lot of RSVP stuff. Um, whether it's RSVP for zero dollars and you can just come and hang out and, um, you know, maybe have a cocktail, that's on the options. One of the things that I've talked to a couple of people about is having a nonprofit kind of get-together happy hour so that we're gathering people who may not know each other. Um, I know that there's a lot of people doing a lot of good work in this valley, um, up and down, and we just don't see a lot of intersections. So the idea is to be a hub. Um, I would love to have, if we can find a way and, and walk through the legal, the legal hoops of do, of potentially projecting a movie on there. It's like, put it out to the town on the town events page and, and not to step on anything that's going on already, but to have, you know, just families come and hang by the river. It's a beautiful spot. We want people to enjoy it. And, um, you know, so it's, it's not an exclusivity thing. It's really a capacity thing. I would also say that the other, the other thing that he didn't mention is that we do have a, a luxury restroom trailer that Mitchell has pulled back from Illinois, uh, very slowly. I think it was six miles a gallon. Um, but that is out there too, and so it's really a kind of a wraparound event space. In terms of operations, which I think Adam wanted me to clarify, we have submitted a site plan. It does have, um, the required sto-
Yep, go ahead. It's just, it's on the screen.
The required storage for, the secure storage for the, the alcohol would be on the, the trailer and the front storage space, a separate storage space in, in Carly's trailer. Um, we have the restroom trailer. We have a path to parking that I think, um, you've had discussions with about where the parking will be. Um, the food truck is kind of off to the side. And then there's just the main dining lawn, which is a lot more contained than the size of that space looks. It's a, it's much more restricted than, um, all of that acreage. So, um, I'm happy to answer any questions, but we do have, oh, we have a water tank too, just to make sure that we're, you know, potable water to wash your hands and, and operate the food truck. We, as Mitchell mentioned, we will have permanent electricity. We're working out, um, the easement issues, some easement issues and, and installation with Excel right now.
And Cole, I have a couple of follow-up questions. Um, I know we're, you're located kind of adjacent to the river. Are you a river company or a riverside company?
No, uh, like, once you get out of the river, we are riverside only, right? So, um, thanks for the question, Adam. We actually will have signage that asks people to stay out of the water. We want people to be next to it, but not in it, especially if you're consuming any, um, hard beverages. The signage will be very clear. We will have ropes and signs that delineate where the boundaries are, um, especially where liquor will be allowed. It's mostly in that yellow space. But we do have, we, we did do the larger boundaries just in terms of carrying it out and, and employees being able to trans, transport it.
And how about fees? Like, what kind of fees are you guys looking, is it, because the food, you're contracting it out?
No, I mean, we're in part, we're in full partnership with Carly Webb.
I see, okay.
Yeah, so she, she'll have, like, it'll always be on-site and for, and she will do all of the food as our business partner
Okay.
um, for every event.
The food will either be sort of catered, right? It'll be like this package that everybody's sort of agreed to before, before it even happens. Or it'll be à la carte and we've got a point of sale and it'll be just like you're buying it.
Okay, and once again, this is just your initial view so that later on, when you have that customer base, you can turn into a more fixed?
Yeah, absolutely. We're, we're hoping at some point to, like, once we have the brick and mortar, we'll have a lot more capacity, have more people out there, but right now, we just want to expose them to the space.
And then can you, apologize, go ahead.
Are you gonna have any private security or are you gonna, you're only in-house checking IDs and that stuff?
It'll only be in, in-house. All of our employees will be tip-certified. Um, and we've, we've, I mean, Carly, Mitchell and I already have that. And then anybody else who is working on premises will have tip certification as well.
That was my question, so thank you.
My only question would be for our Deputy Town Clerk. So, Rizlinda, um, F. and B. LLC is gonna have to be a licensed business in the town of Silt to operate.
That is correct.
And so is the food truck?
Um, we discussed that.
Unless that's gonna, so.
It's not, we're not considering it technically a food truck because it's gonna be permanently fixed. So that is going to be part of that business. So it's not gonna be considered a separate entity.
Okay, and then do we need Rizlinda as a whole to also have a business license?
Um, as long as they're operating, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Nicole, as long as Rizlinda F. and B. LLC is the one conducting the business, they're the ones that have to carry the business license.
So they did get a business license that is, um, particular to the events that they are doing this year. That they would have to, once they actually get a structure built and, and progress, um, their business license will change a little bit as far as the use, but for what they're doing for a special event right now is what they're licensed for.
Okay.
Nicole gave us a cert, a license with sort of asterisk, no alcohol, and then.
Until this gets approved.
We get through this and then we'll get an updated, an updated one.
And then I guess this would be for Nicole also. So if they have a, maybe not the rafting event, but another type of event, would they be allowed to have people camp on premise?
That is not something that was discussed or, or approved when they came in front of their site plan review.
Yeah, that it's not, not approved, so I think then we move into having a lodging situation.
Okay, so, and I know that that's misconstrued a little bit, but because this is a unique event,
Yeah.
um, that they don't have their permanent structure, um, I did a lot of research on this and this is what this state wants them to do. Yes, they, they, they said to go along these lines.
Yeah, I, I get that for the, the wording on the license, the liquor license.
Right.
I was just making sure that we're not gonna have, you know, thirty campers pull up in this field
You are not.
and then serve them at an event.
We don't want them. We're happy, we're happy to send them to the KOA in the holiday.
They RSVP'd with their forty-foot trailers.
Yeah.
And when they do, um, construct their permanent structure, their license will change as well.
Okay.
It'll just be an easier process for them because they've already established.
Established, right? Then it's just a modification of premise and stuff like that, yeah.
Correct.
No, I think, I, I think this is a, a, a great idea to team up with another local business and use this, this property and, as we just discussed in our previous meeting, get, get people to the town. So, um, we can make sure that the bus swings through coming to Golden Gate. Before they leave town, yeah.
Do pit stops?
Yeah, so, no, I think this is a, a great idea to start using this property for, for hopefully its intended purpose, so.
Yes.
I'm concerned about the survey. We, Lori, you mentioned, you know, ninety-one percent approval. It's eighty-two people. It's eighty-two people making a decision for a community of over thirty-five hundred. I'm, I'm concerned that the sample size was exceedingly small.
They did, including in that survey is all of the ones that they did not get back.
Right.
And they gave you a map of also the area.
They reached out to seven, I did the math, because that's what I do. Um, they reached out to seven percent of the town population. Really six percent if you exclude businesses, um, and focus on the, the residents. Um, of that group, only combined business and residential, only a hundred were willing to participate. And of that group, only eighty-two were residents. So what this means effectively is that just a hair over two percent of the town's population made the decision for the whole town. That's my concern. If, as a statistician in my free time, it's, it's an invalid sample size. I, I wish you had taken the opportunity to reach out to more people. And I, I'm not, I don't think this is a bad idea, let me be clear, but I wish it represented a greater input from our community.
So I don't, yeah, just before you make the point, the survey's not even required to get a liquor license. This is just something that.
I was gonna say ultimately it's up to us.
Yeah, no.
It's up to us, I mean, yeah.
May I respond, Mayor Pro Tem?
Please.
Um, Liquor Pros is an independent company. This, this is not Rizlinda Events, so they went out and hired an independent company that's been doing this, I could, about ten to twelve years, circulating petitions and furtherance of alcohol and other type of licensing applications. I've been practicing alcohol beverage law since nineteen ninety-eight. Um, math-wise, I, what, about twenty-five or six years. This is, this is typical of what we'll see in Jefferson County or in Denver or in Lakewood or in really high-density populations. Because what they try to do is go sample, like, you know statistically the sample size, but they go sample. We don't have any input on what they do. That's entirely up to them. But these results, they, I think they knocked on two-hundred-and-fifty-one doors and were able to obtain this many signatures. Um, I agree, it's not the entire town, but I think has been said before, there's, you don't need the entire town's input for a liquor license to be issued. In fact, the petitions are not required. It's just by petitions or monsternesses or otherwise. Um, and so I can tell you that, please don't hold that against these gentlemen here. This is a third-party independent company that conducted the petition. They really had no say on what the sample size looked like. It's outside the realm. They paid a third-party company to do that.
Well, I think part of that might have been, Trustee Hennerhand's just, it might have been that, it's not, it's saying eighty-two percent of the people, basically trying to say eighty-two percent of people said it was great. Well, but you only asked eight people or ten people and eight of them say it's great. That's eighty percent. That sounds awesome until you actually look at the numbers themselves. And that's, again, I think it's a great idea, great use of the property. It's awesome to start. I mean, it makes sense as a business to start recouping some money already versus waiting until you get everything built because it's gonna take time. And also getting that exposure to the area and the property and everything else. But I think sometimes it's just one of those, and it's not, I don't think there's any malicious intent possi- in, in that, you paid somebody else to do the survey, but just sometimes when numbers are presented, we look to see where the number, what the numbers actually say versus just the face value.
I think a hundred people is a great turnout for surveys in Silt. I don't know if we get to.
I mean, this is. People are knocking on doors.
We read that all the.
Some of our surveys we had for our business stuff that showed up for open houses, so.
And I appreciate that. It was voluntary and, and not a requirement. It's just because I'm a, I do this kind of stuff as, as part of my day job and I, I am a little bit concerned about two percent representing a ninety-one percent approval. And really, one of my main points was just to provide context, that it is an exceedingly small sample set. You know, if I were working with that contractor, I would have gone back to them and said, I need double these numbers. I appreciate what you've done. Go do it again. That way you're, that, you know, the plus or minus is greater than the number of participants.
Right. Well, I could tell you, like I said, this is, this looks pretty standard throughout the front range too, where it's a lot more condensed areas with a lot more residents and businesses. These are, these fall right in line. So it wasn't something that I saw that said, oh, my gosh, this is low. I tend to agree with you. If we do see something that comes back that looks like that, we say, wait a second, this doesn't look like what we typically see in these surveys. Could you please go out and knock on additional doors?
Understood. And, and again, I don't want to imply that I don't approve of the idea or the premise. I, I agree with everything everyone else has said.
Thank you.
And the other, the other point on that is this is a public hearing, so a hundred percent of the town has a chance to show up tonight and voice their opinion, so.
And they rarely do.
They rarely do, yeah.
That's all, any more, Trustee Claussen?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Uh, if there's nothing else, then we'll open up the public hearing. Okay. Uh, the time is seven thirty-three PM and we'll open up the public hearing in regards to the new lodging and entertainment liquor license application for Rizlinda F. and B. LLC. Uh, persons desiring to make a public comment on this item, uh, on the agenda, please activate the raised hand function in the meeting program. Or Sheila, any phone calls or emails in regards to this agenda item?
No, I did not hear from anyone and I do not see any raised hands.
Okay. Would anyone, we don't, anyone in the public with us like to speak to this agenda item? Nope, okay. Uh, the time is seven thirty-four PM and I will close the public hearing and then open up to further discussion by the board or a motion.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the new lodging and entertainment liquor license application for Rizlinda, excuse me, F. and B. LLC.
Second.
Uh, motion by Trustee Claussen to approve the new lodging and entertainment liquor license application for Rizlinda F. and B. LLC. That was seconded by Trustee Seifert. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And good luck.
Thank you for tolerating my clip-art site plan too.
Look forward to maybe getting down there.
Yeah.
Thank you. Pleasure to meet you all.
You have a great night.
Two Forks does great food. I know that for a fact.
Yeah, I hit their tuxedo this last time.
All right, we are right on time, so next item on the agenda is the Town of Silt Workplace Culture Assessment with Ann McCord, and I will turn this over to Administrator Lamon.
Can you introduce Ann McCord, who's our, uh, she's our principal I L G, our H R contractors? And as part of her contract, she's uh does these every couple of years and well, Ann, why don't you explain it all, I'll I'll let you talk about it a little bit, you're more versed at it.
I will, you sound like you got a frog in your throat there, Jeff.
I do, I went outside during the break and there's a bunch of smoke in the air, so.
Oh, geez.
Blame it on that.
Okay, well, I hear you, well, hi, everyone, it's nice to see you. Um, I don't know, Sheila, like, I could share my screen or you could go ahead and um, you know, manage the presentation. But let me tell you a little bit about kind of the process here, so back in um twenty-twenty, we did an assessment of the culture right when um I was engaged with Town of Silt to provide human resources services and we thought it was a good time, kind of like tailing at the end of uh COVID and there's certainly been a lot of work around employee compensation and other things that Jeff and the team have focused on. So we thought it'd be a good idea to get a sense of where things stood today. So we went ahead and conducted a similar um culture evaluation as we did in twenty-twenty. And we're gonna share, I'm gonna share with you today kind of the um where we landed in twenty-twenty-three and give you some comparisons so you can kind of see how things have evolved. So what we do with the survey is it is a, it's an online survey, it's confidential. So we, you know, we want to make sure folks feel comfortable providing open and honest communication about their experience working at the Town of Silt. Um, I'll go through some of the specifics of the questions that we ask, but um basically, most of the questions we ask on a one-to-five scale and in those we um you know, we average the numbers, someone on the call said they're a numbers person, so hopefully I'll I'll meet your expectations on that front, but we average all the numbers and then we're able to give you a number from one to five on where certain questions and certain care categories fall on that. Um, um, we do some open-ended questions, demographic questions and um really we, you know, strongly encourage everyone to participate. Really what you see in these things, go ahead, Sheila, you can go to the next page. Um, so, you know, we had great participation rate um in the past or generally what you find with um employee surveys, if you get forty percent, that's a good number. Certainly the Town of Silt is a smaller group, so we want to get as many people as possible. We had seventy-one percent of the folks participate in twenty-twenty-three and seventy-nine percent, excuse me, seventy-nine percent participate in twenty-twenty. Those are great numbers, we feel like based on that participation level, this is, this is good data. Before we go to the next thing, any questions about the process or, you know, um the reason why we's uh opted to do this at this time?
I don't know.
All right.
Yeah, I would like to hear why we're doing this at this time.
Excuse me?
Why we are doing this at this time, you said?
Sure, yeah, so really it was because we kind of had this lull during COVID. Um, really, you know, folks were trying to get on top of budgets and um, you know, what team members we are gonna need. So we really felt like this spring, we were kind of coming out of COVID, if you will, and it was a good opportunity. Usually I would like to do it every two years, um but because of COVID, we waited one more year. Um, and so really it was uh essentially because of COVID and then we decided, hey, let's jump in. Jeff said, yeah, I'm game, let's do it. Um, we were looking at like some of the H R strategy for twenty-twenty-three and this seemed to fit in.
Great, thank you.
You bet. Okay, so this is, you know, this might be like a brain or a, you know, mind chart for you here, but really um, this just shows you, you know, so we always allow folks to say, hey, I don't wanna, I prefer not to provide this information when we ask demographic information. And that is because, you know, some folks are worried that we're gonna kind of trace back who they are or just they don't like to be attached to that. So um you can see that um we did have less participation in public works this time around um than we did, but who knows who that twenty percent is of preferring not to answer. Um, P D, we had twenty-five percent of participants were in P D, twenty-five percent were in admin. Um, ten percent public works, ten percent community development, um and then water and wastewater. So we can go to the next slide, Sheila, thank you.
I have a real quick question, Ann.
Yeah.
This is Mayor Egle. Did they get to, the people that participated in the survey chose the department they worked in?
Yeah.
So I mean, potentially you could add someone that
Oh, yeah.
that maybe is
Absolutely.
Public Works and clicked Administration or or maybe they feel like they're Administration, so they they clicked on. So, okay, yeah, I just wanted.
Absolutely, I think that that could be part of it and then there was, you know, there are certainly of all the groups um, public works, so there are a group of employees who have Silt um emails and then another group of employees who don't have a Silt specific email and it's their personal email. So that was, you know, something that we had to, like a little bit of a hurdle, we had to do that last time as well. Um, but, you know, it, so then they had to go to their Gmail account or something and some folks, you know, weren't comfortable necessarily responding that way. Um, but you're right, they can click anything they want, we certainly don't know
Okay.
where they actually.
All right.
And similar with this chart.
I mean, they all should have a town email, I think.
That's a, that's a different.
I know, it's a different thing, but I'm just saying, but, you know, you might get more response, you know, you might get a hundred percent of everybody if you did that.
But they may not use it and that's why they wouldn't have it, but whatever, that's.
Yeah. So that last page uh is is uh the percentage of people, I don't, I'm not understanding that last page, what is percentage of?
So of the participants, if you want to go back up there, Sheila, thank you. So of the people who participated in the survey, they, at to your point, they were able to select where they, which department they are part of. So we gave them a list, including I prefer not to answer and they could say I'm in Administration, Public Works, Community Development, and they were able to self-select. And so in a larger, like, for the Town of Silt, this is probably less like impactful, but if I'm surveying a thousand people, it's helpful if I can say, hey, I dived in on Administration and then I can provide more kind of, you know, analysis around each particular department. You know, with the Town of Silt, we typically don't do that, just because there's not enough people to make it statistically relevant.
Right, that makes sense.
Yeah. All right, thanks, Sheila, go ahead to the next one. So similarly, whether folks are in a management role, they're a individual contributor or they prefer not to answer, not, you know, nothing like too exciting on this slide, go ahead. And then tenure, um what I liked about this is that, you know, certainly it shows in the two-to-five-year range, you're, you know, you're building that kind of, um, what I would say is, you know, the candidate pools, the folks who are, you know, more invested in Silt, as some folks um are, you know, kind of have been with the town a long time. You're still building a newer team uh member group, which is great. All right. Okay, so I'll I'll be brief on this, but if any of you have had the question um or know what the net promoter score, essentially what it is, is you get your tires changed at Joe's Auto Shop and you get an email or a text afterwards and says, hey, on a scale of zero to ten, how likely are you to refer our services? So go ahead and go to the next um slide. You, as a company, and when, you know, big companies do that and they look at what their customer net promoter score is, employers do this too, because you really want to know like who's referring the Town of Silt as a gra- uh as a great place to work. So we asked everyone who participated on a scale of zero to ten, how likely are you to recommend Silt to a friend or colleague? I won't get into all the gory details, but essentially the score can be from negative one hundred to positive one hundred. Um, basically promoters are considered anyone who gives you a nine or ten and detractors are people who give you a zero to six. So we take the percent of promoters and subtract the percent of uh detractors and that's how we get the employee net promoter score. A score of ten to thirty is considered good and go ahead to the next slide, Sheila. Um, it was in twenty-twenty, it was a seventeen-point-four, but drumroll, let's go to twenty-twenty-three, it was a sixty-five. So seventy percent of the people who answered that question gave the Town of Silt a nine or a ten if they would recommend the Town of Silt as a great place to work, um which is amazing. Um, and only uh five percent or one individual gave the town a score of zero to six. Now, if I have any engineers in the group, I do a lot of work with engineering firms and I T companies and they say, hey, as an I T person or an engineer, I'm never giving anyone a nine or a ten. Um, so a six is considered a detractor. This is a really good score and what it shows and the reason we ask this is because we want to see like how likely are people to stay? When uh Sheila or Amy or Jeff have a new position that they're posting, you know, are people gonna be referring this uh town as a great place to work and it's a great score? Any questions on net promoter score? All right, well, I can tell you, I've been doing this a long time and sixty-five is an amazing score. All right. Okay, so then we had eight categories of questions and and we had twenty-six questions. So basically what we do is we we write a statement and we say to the participants on a scale of one to five, how would you rate this statement? One is strongly disagree and five is strongly agree. So we're gonna go through kind of what are the top scoring categories and statements and then what are the lower scoring, but you all don't really have many lower scoring, but go ahead, Sheila, let's go to the next slide. So I did want to kind of show you a comparison from twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-three. These are all extraordinarily high scores, so scores in the fours are amazing. In twenty-twenty-three, the top three scoring uh categories were communication, employee engagement and supportive management and we'll dig into that and show you exactly what statements kind of uh were part of that. In twenty-twenty, it was diversity, equity and inclusion, communication and employee engagement. So again, I wouldn't, um, you know, a three-point-eight-three and three-point-eight-three, those are amazing scores from twenty-twenty as well. Um, these other scores on the left just happen to be higher in twenty-twenty-three. So the top scoring statements, and again, these are in different categories, but the ones that scored the highest in this year's uh survey were the town provides me with flexibility to meet the needs of my work and personal life. Four-point-seven, that's almost perfect. I'm, I feel I'm able to communicate freely, up the line, even when I'm communicating bad news, that's a four-point-six. I'll tell you, um, it's rare that I see that statement that high because sometimes people are really comfortable like talking to one another or their manager about it, but they wouldn't necessarily leapfrog their manager, so this is a great score. I feel respected by my manager. Again, communication was so high, I received regular communication from my manager about what's happening. Honest and open two-way communication and my manager's actions are consistent with their words, so they practice what they preach. Four-point-five-five, those are really all extraordinarily high. So we say areas to focus improvement efforts, but, you know, frankly, I usually, when we're talking about this, the scores are in the twos. So these aren't low necessarily, but if you look at the three lowest categories in twenty-twenty-three, the categories are resources, diversity, equity, inclusion and total rewards. Total rewards is considered like your compensation and benefits package, but the fact that those are over four, um, it's hard to say that they're like areas for improvement. Um, in twenty-twenty, the lowest scoring categories were resources, leadership and supportive management. Now, if you remember, supportive management was one of the top three this time around. All right, let's go to the next one. And feel free to jump in and ask any questions. So again, um, lowest scoring statement, so these are the statements within those categories um where there are enough people to do the work on my team with three-point-six-six-five. Again, that's better than average, it's close to a four. I'm paid fairly for the work I do. Um, this score increased significantly from twenty-twenty. Um, you know, I know that um the team and Jeff and you all have focused on trying to make sure that you're staying focused on having a a competitive wage and and responding kind of the the different dynamics in the work environment. So a three-point-five isn't terrible, usually getting it above a three is tough. And then the rest are over four, poor performance on my team is addressed, I've got the materials, technology and equipment to do my job. And we always ask about like how does the, you know, leadership make decisions about where they apply resources? Are they giving the right people resources or financial resources in the right places of the organization? Even though it's a lower scoring statement, it's a four-point-one, that's pretty darn good. So comparing twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty, um again, uh the lowest score in twenty-twenty was resources. Um, and at a three-point-oh-eight, it still is, but that's almost a four. Again, I don't want to demean what people might be wanting to uh talk about there. Um, but look, the scores are great, um, any questions about all this, we'll get into a little more detail in the next couple of slides, but want to make sure I can answer any of your questions at this point.
I guess I'm curious on how this uh survey was presented to the employees, because I mean, these are fantastic numbers.
Yeah, so we use similar language as we did last time, so typically what we do is Jeff sends out an email to the team says, hey, you know, we have this impartial third party who is conducting the assessment, we'd really like your honest and candid feedback about your experience working here. Um, you're gonna get this survey, um, it's confidential, et cetera, and then we send it out and uh my partner Jen works, um if anybody didn't get the link or they have questions about it, they're referred to my partner Jen. And um, you know, we just continue to send it out, so it really is like we want your honest and candid feedback. We use similar language that we did in twenty-twenty and similar language that we use um across many of the organi- most of the organizations that we do this for. Um, I can tell you that um that N P S score where you all were a sixty plus, you know, more than sixty. Um, the worst one I've ever done is a negative sixty-four and um, you know, really a lot to work on. Um, this is exceptional and I think that um you got a couple of things on your side. First of all, you know, you're a small team. I think there's been a lot of effort to say, hey, why do, what do we need to do to make sure people want to work at the Town of Silt? You focused on compensation, you focused on benefits, you focused on work-life. Um, there's a lot of efforts that have happened. You already were to kind of a good baseline, so it wasn't like, you know, things weren't terrible. But I think there's been a a lot of effort focused on um making sure it's a place where people want to work. And you all are in a tough spot, I mean, you're on the western slope and you have a limited uh candidate pool. Um, but going to the um N P S score of who would recommend people to work at the Town of Silt, you've got a good referral base, so that's great.
So it was all via email?
It was via email, Jeff, I don't know if you can, uh, I don't know, I think we, you may have mentioned it at a um employee meeting and I don't know if you encouraged folks outside of that.
No, it was all email and I did, I mean, I, we talked with uh the department directors at staff meetings and talked about it a little bit. But I I honestly don't know how much um encouraging they did to get people to fill them out, but it was, it was very relaxed, there wasn't much, no arm twisting that I'm aware of.
Everyone has uh access to emails?
Um, well, I know we had uh private emails for most of, most everybody, right? So we sent.
Most of my crew on Public Works, they don't work at a computer, they don't have a town email. It went to their personal emails, so that was seven of them, Joe has it, but the six crew members in are full-time, part-timer, it went to their uh personal emails.
Every employee got an email.
And every employee got an email, I saw it some way or another.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's what I was trying to figure out.
She was like, everybody had the opportunity.
Yes, exactly.
How many employees does the town of Silt houses?
I think we had twenty-nine or.
That's the total employees?
Yep. All right Sheila, let's go to the next slide. So one thing we ask is folks to say, write the three words that you think describe the culture of the town of Silt in working there. And then if you're familiar with the word cloud, the words that are used the most are bigger. And so this was the word cloud based on participant feedback. So I'm trying to think, I'm looking at this. Generally, all positive. I love the one coming alive and I think we hear a lot of that from, you know, towns and businesses coming, kind of coming out of COVID. You know, like, hey, things are coming back, we're doing in-person things, that sort of thing. So you know, really positive feedback here. All right, next slide. Okay, go ahead, the next one. So you know, we do ask, even you know, though it's super positive, we say, hey, what's the one thing that the town could do to improve the culture? Recognition, that's not uncommon that we hear that. And some of the feedback around that is really, you know, sometimes recognition, folks want to have like a team event or they want to have public recognition, but it's also just like saying thank you. I don't think these are issues, meaning like, I don't think there's a problem here, but I think that generally like, it's always important to recognize your employees and that was one theme we saw. More employee events, you know, Jeff and I talked about this. I know there have been, you know, like the making smores and different kind of fun employee events. You know, you, you kind of have to have a variety of things because some, like a bowling event's going to be, you know, fun for some people and not for others. You know, having these different types of events, it really just depends on who you are and what gets you excited. But I think, you know, you can always try to be more creative with that. And it's again, something that we've seen with other employers. As folks have come out of COVID, they're excited about doing things together with the community, so not a surprise there. Improved facilities, public works, you know, that one came up more than once. And I think there was a little bit of tongue-in-cheek in the new town hall, but you know, I think whatever you could do there, I think that that, it was more of a tongue-in-cheek. All right. And then short-term recommendations that we had, you know, just make sure that managers are empowered to acknowledge and appreciate their employees. There are a lot of cool things. In the HR subcommittee meeting last week, I wasn't able to attend, but my partner Jen did. And I know that there were some fun discussions around things you could do to, you know, recognize longevity and contributions and you know, project, you know, deliverables and those kinds of things. So I know that the team's looking at ways that you can do that because again, some people don't want public recognition. They want more private recognition and really it's up to the individual manager to understand what's going to be meaningful for their employees. So I know there's already work on that front, continuing, looking at the team building events. And then we just, you know, being around, like leadership kind of being engaged and around, I think, you know, always is helpful, especially because the public works department is somewhere else and you know, it's a, it's a community in general, so not everybody's under the same roof, so being visible is always helpful. I think that's it, go ahead, the next slide. Yeah, and then we always recommend that when we do these sorts of assessments, that there's some feedback mechanism to the employees to say, we heard you, this is what we heard, this is what we're doing. You know, I think that it, right now, the town of Silt's at a pretty high bar, so you know, again, being creative and how to continue to engage folks is important. I know you have some new positions that you're recruiting for, so it's always fun to bring in new ideas and new, you know, perspectives. But you know, from my perspective and the different organizations and towns and cities I work with, the town of Silt's doing a great job. That's all I had, any questions or thoughts or Jeff, anybody want to jump in?
You know, just one quick observation, I think, that I'd like to throw out there and that is, one thing that I think we should probably look at, especially as we move into the budget season, is making sure that we have enough employees to actually address the work that we have. You saw that in a couple of comments, I think, and I know we have a couple of spots in the town where we could probably use some additional help. So I'm going to be kind of focused on that as we move into the budget season. That's all, you know, I really have.
So are you planning on doing this every couple of years then?
Yeah, I think so.
That'd be my recommendation, I think that's great. And again, we just kind of lost a year to COVID, but I, you know, I'd say we'd do this again in twenty-five.
No, I think it's a good idea, yeah.
I think it's a great idea, I'd like to see it up where I work.
We do it every year at our work, but that's a lot bigger company and I think the town, the number of employees we have every two years is probably good.
And it gives us an opportunity to, to sort of incorporate some of the suggestions that we got out of the committee meeting the other day, the HR committee meeting. So we'll, we'll work on those, it'll give us some time to actually get them implemented.
Yeah.
Seems like it would open up dialogue that you guys don't even know that need to be, that needs to be had, you know what I mean? With, with the, some of the comments or whatever, that you can talk to all employees together.
I think it comes also for a full circle that helps build trust to where the employees are answering those questions. You're analyzing the data, they're bringing it back to the board, we are bringing it into budgeting and we are making effective changes, could be title changes, people moving from a position, having more responsibilities, having a title, maybe a rate increase or, you know, not to micromanage. Amazing job that Jeff does, but he knows exactly what I mean, you know. So it would over time build trust with the employees that they are really being heard and that those changes have been taking place and therefore, you know, we could potentially be keeping the employees a lot longer and we would be seeing more of that longevity and a lot of positive things that could come out of it.
But I think we're small enough that these results weren't really a surprise. I mean, our supervisors and managers were shovel, or shovel, shoulder to shoulder, sometimes with a shovel, shoulder to shoulder with, with the people that they're working with. So they, they pretty much know where the, you know, where the rough spots are and how we can improve things, so. But it's always great to get a little validation, something like this, and to hear some ideas and stuff from folks like you who are out there in the world too, in different environments. So it's all good.
Just seeing the letters NPS.
You know, you guys are really, oh, sorry, I apologize.
I was just going to say, just seeing the words or the letters NPS gave me PTSD from a, from a life in tourism and e-commerce. And for context, these numbers are outstanding. It's difficult unless, unless you've had it thrust upon you professionally, it's difficult to understand how good these numbers are. So some of the larger organizations I've worked in in tourism, it was part of every single employee's individual annual review. Was the organization's NPS score that, you know, hundreds of thousands, millions of consumers gave them, that filtered down to every single individual employee. And it was just this giant anvil hanging over your head or piano over wily coyote every year was, what's our NPS number going to be? Because you knew it affected your own individual review from management. These numbers are absolutely outstanding.
Yeah, great job.
Next time, can we put a warning on it though, so that I don't get triggered?
There you are. Well, and to your point, it's a really high score. So I think that, you know, as we see like customer NPS, a sixty-five is great. Employer NPS, we generally see in between twenty and thirty. So this is unprecedented. And it may, you know, I don't, I think Jeff and team are doing a great job, but I think it being held to the bar of sixty-five is a pretty high bar. Because that's for an employer, it's one thing to be like, yeah, I got my tires changed or, you know, I stayed at this hotel, but it's another thing to say, you pay me and you're my benefits. I mean, there's a lot of different kind of baggage that employees bring, so it's a great score.
It may also add to recruitment for new employees. So when I worked at the Aspen Skiing Company, the NPS, it was part of the culture. It was something that they advertised and it was how they were able to poach employees from other ski resorts. Was that our culture is better and they could quantify it with the NPS score to say, this is validation that our culture is better.
And we have talked about how to, how to incorporate that in our recruiting. Because we are recruiting for three positions right now as we speak, so.
It's, for anyone in the know, it's, it's an important metric. We all care about culture and the abstract, but this is a way to quantify it.
And what I like about it is you don't have to do this full survey. Like you could do spot checks on E N P S every six months, because it's a quick question, right? You know, on a scale of zero to ten, how likely are you to refer the town of Silt to friends and colleagues who are looking for a job? You can see if you're up and down and so it's a nice way to do spot checks in between like these more robust surveys.
And course correct, right?
Yeah.
Again, at prior employer, they did a quarterly. And it wasn't used punitively, but it was, hey, we need to course correct in these areas. Okay, that way you have that check in three times a year before you got bludgeoned in your annual review with it.
You do have PTSD.
I got scars, but I'm not going to show anybody.
And I know Ann says seventy-one percent is a, is a great response rate, but I'd really like to see if we can engage the ones.
Yeah, I'd like to see everybody participate.
Chris, you have a good idea about giving everybody a, an email address, but I mean, for some people in public works, they might use it once for the year and that would be for the, for the survey. You know, maybe, maybe it's as easy as loading some iPads with the survey and bringing them over. Just putting them out at lunchtime or something at public works and asking them to do it, no pressure, you know, or something, just to make it even more available, because I mean, it could get lost in your junk.
Well, you have, you have on tablet, you just put it by the time clock, when you clock in, as you're clocking in or out, take five minutes and get paid to do it.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
I, I would add maybe help them understand the value to, to the whole organization and to themselves. Hey, this is helping us course correct, depending on your feedback. This is helping us draw in prospective new employees, help them see the forest for the trees, so to speak.
Yeah, just even looking at the results of that survey, even though we have really amazing scores, most of them are above four. It just from, from our perspective, my perspective as a board member to look at resources and see that it is a little bit lower, it gives us an opportunity to see how we can improve that, how we can provide the resources so that the town employees can perform on their jobs. And resources could be, you know, like Jeff said, additional employees that we need to address, maybe seasonal employees that can help with some activities or a number of different things. Or in Trey's world, could be the proper equipment, so people won't get hurt. So you know, that, that little seventeen percentage chart of four point means a lot to me personally.
Well, and the board has done a great job over the last few years of replacing equipment.
Good.
Just take vehicles, for example, you know, we've, we've replaced work trucks with hundred eighty thousand miles on them that were hand-me-downs from Garfield County Road and Bridge. And now we have a brand-new work truck that's going to last us many years. Trey was talking the other day about the fact that some of these trucks are only getting, you know, two to three thousand miles a year on them, because we're a small town, so they ought to last a long time and they're going to be new for a long time. Because when people have something new, they take care of it. Same thing with the cops, you know, we've, we've replaced a lot of those hand-me-down cars from, from the sheriff's office with a hundred, a hundred thousand miles on them, with something that actually works and they're not breaking down mid-shift. And that means a lot in the recruiting wars when you're talking to, you know, a rifle officer or Glenwood Springs officer who's thinking about making the jump and wants to talk about what kind of equipment do you have? Well, the chief can say, well, we have brand-new Durangos. You know, it's a big deal, so it helps.
Yeah, and I'm not talking negatively about the board or past decisions, I'm just re-emphasizing.
I'm not either.
Yeah, how important it is for us to keep that up and by listening to resources, maybe trying filtering through what those resources that people are responding to the surveys, do they actually mean to? And try to address that, because I think the main purpose of the, the survey is not only to pat ourselves on the back, but also use that as a tool to improve on the areas that need improvement. Why not a five? Four is great, but aim for, for the five, that's, you know, aim for the skies.
Well, that's one of my phrases these guys have heard and that is, good enough never is.
There you go, you just keep improving.
Yeah, continuous improvement is a really old concept, but it's still foremost in my brain.
Get better every day.
Yeah, that's it.
Yes.
Jeff, does, does the management team in a, in a general sense, for the employees who like public appreciation, is, is there a budgetary allocation for that? So hypothetically, the public works team crushed it over a weekend, something broke, it happens, I know. And he says, I want to take them to lunch, is it coming out of Trey's pocket or does the town have an allocation for that?
We pay Trey a lot, he can, he can do that.
Not wanting to wade into that debate.
No, we, we do have line items for that and everybody knows they can take their team.
Use an entertainment.
Out or buy them a card or a gift certificate or something like that.
Buy them a car?
Card.
Old county car, right?
Gift card.
A hundred thousand miles on it.
I want to get on that program.
I heard car too, Jeff.
No, that's good to know, again, separating out the private thank you from the public, like, hey, guys, let's go out last weekend, sucked. Everybody can come in a couple of hours late or we'll do a lunch or I'll have coffee delivered, those sorts of things.
Yeah, having breakfast, something.
Makes a huge difference. And it's that personal touch that people appreciate, it's not handing them a gift card, it's experiential. It builds a lot of team focus. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just got two quick things that I'd like to point out. I pointed out during our committee meeting too also, but to see, we had twenty people respond to this survey and to have more employee events come up, I thought was pretty amazing. I mean, these people already spend so much time together, but they're, they're saying they want to see them more.
It's a great point.
You know, it's a, it's kind of an oddity in employment is usually these people don't want to see anybody after, after they bring, you know, you clock out of work, you want to be away from your coworkers, so I thought that was cool to see that on there. And then I don't even, I forgot what you, you call them, the little poster with all the different words on it?
Word cloud.
A word cloud. I do think it is important for the management team to look at the small words in there and see what they can do to focus on those, because it's a small sample base, so you know, the smaller words probably came up maybe one time. But whatever employee wrote down divided, that's, I mean, that's something that is deep in them. So to make sure that that's being worked on, I mean, the predictable, small, good. I mean, focusing on those little words, I think, helps the management team get those other people up to those, those fours and fives that we're, we're shooting for.
Great point.
Agreed. Okay. Okay, anything else?
What if divided was a positive? Work is evenly divided between team members. I'm just throwing it out there for better understanding. I don't know that they wrote divided as a negative.
As a negative, potentially, yeah.
Like, hey, our work gets divided, I'm not the only one doing everything while everybody else sits around and keeps a chair from floating away.
Right. I still think it's a small word, so it's worth really focusing on, yeah. And the big words are always like, yes, we killed it, but you don't, you don't take care of those other words, then the people start going down, so.
Great point.
It is a good point.
Other than that, I think it looks great.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks, Ann.
So a lot of this, I have to give our town administration accolades here. In our subcommittee meeting, our managers made it clear that a lot of this is because of his leadership, so. And I'm not just saying that, they, I mean, they made it clear, it wasn't the, the smooches, it was, you know, they. And I'm not just saying that, they, I mean, they made it clear, it wasn't the, the smooches, it was, you know, I, they honestly feel that way, so. No, I think that's important to know. And I, and I assume looking at this, that the employees feel the same about their managers, so. So, good work to everybody.
I appreciate that, um, but honestly, it's a great group to work with, they're all, all self-motivated and I don't, I don't have to do much, you know, there's no whip cracking going on around here, that's for sure.
Nice.
Of course, maybe, uh, you think?
Sometimes my best manager's skill is staying out of the way and let them do what they can do.
That's exactly right.
Exactly.
Exactly right. Okay, Ann, thanks for staying up late with us, we appreciate it.
Great to see y'all, appreciate the time, thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Take care.
I guess it was okay to dismiss her, is that right?
Yep.
Is that a good event?
That discussion is over with, so, uh, next item on the agenda is the trustee committee appointments. And I will turn this over to Administrator Lehman.
Yeah, we talked about this a couple weeks ago or a couple months ago and realized we weren't quite ready to talk about these committees that, uh, these standing committees that Kyle Knott had been on. I think one thing I'd like to maybe emphasize is tonight is probably not the time to talk about whether or not we still need these committees, I mean, I have maybe my own opinions on that. But I think it'd be a good idea to go ahead and assign trustees to these committees and then have some committee meetings and then have the committees talk about, and I, you know, whatever committee it is, we can kind of give a brief where we are and what we've been talking about and how come we haven't met in two years and that kind of thing. And, uh, and then make a decision in that group whether or not there's, there's something there that we should continue to work on. And if we, whether the answer is yes or no, we would come back to the board and just talk about whether or not we wanted to continue with that committee. It's not always people's time, if, if there's a, some, um, you know, sentiment that we don't need to talk about that anymore, cause it's, you know, we're already taking care of it, let's, let's just, uh, defund the committee and move on to borrow a term.
Sounds good.
So I think with that said, uh, you know, there are five committees that we, uh, have, uh, one person on. And so with detox, regional detox, Derek is our representative for the board. Uh, also on that would be the chief, and I know he's not on the master schedule here, but, uh, and I. So it's a relatively small committee. I don't know how you want to take these, you want to take them one at a time, maybe, maybe we run through them once.
I'll volunteer for code enforcement. I'll just start it.
Okay.
I can volunteer for parks recreation cost or master plan.
I thought I was on that, but I guess maybe not. Well, no, I thought that originally when it was first set up, I think Andrea and I and Kyle were all on it, I was an alternate, so we could just keep Andrea and I on there.
Are, and you, in fact, you, you're shown on here. Justin, so if, if everybody would, uh, agree to put Andrea back on there, then she would take Kyle's place and it'd be the, it'd be Justin and Andrea back on that.
I.
Sure, yeah.
Nope.
Unanimous.
That'll work unanimous.
See how easy that was, Andrea? And then I heard Chris sign up for code enforcement, which is, uh, actually no other, uh, board members are on that as of now. And with two members of P and Z, one of whom is no longer on P and Z, so it'd be Lindsay Williams and Chris.
Does anybody else want to sit on that?
No.
Okay. That's one.
Okay. And water wastewater irrigation master plan, that's, um, an effort we made a long time ago, even before the Dewberry master plan. So we would need to just sit down and kind of refold, reformulate how that works, but and I told you, we weren't gonna talk about that, so I won't anymore. But we had, we basically, it was, uh, it was Trey and I and Kyle on that.
Trustee four.
I, I don't have the time.
I can, I can do it.
Trying to make it here.
So I'll be in two committees if, because I'm, yeah.
And I can be on that one also as an alternate.
Alternate when I cannot make it, okay.
Uh, doesn't mean, it'd be just two of you on there, so you could both be on there, shouldn't be a problem.
And the reason why I want to do the water wastewater is especially because of the project that we are working and I want to be as involved as possible, like in the know, for the upcoming decisions that we, we are going to make and then I want to make sure that I'm bringing that back for our meetings, be of resource for all of us, so.
Anybody else for detox or OHV?
I guess we got one person on each one of those.
Mayor is on OHV and, uh, what else did I say? Detox and Derek would be on that, I don't know, detox, so, I'll just leave him that way.
It's good, especially with the detox, having the chief and having yourself.
It's something you don't want to hear about.
That'll get in the news tomorrow.
Jeff, is this a good time to bring up, um, restarting the economic development committee?
Sure.
I think, you know, hearing all the discussions earlier, all the other moving parts that are going on right now, it would be helpful to have that committee reestablished. And if it is, I'm, I'm happy to participate.
Yeah, I think we called that ASAP last time, you got, you all might remember that effort back.
Well, that was the study that we used.
Right.
But it was a, I thought the committee itself was the economic development committee.
Sheila, do you remember that? I'm, I'm.
Cause an ASAP committee.
I don't see that on our committee list.
No, I don't recall what that might have been called, that doesn't ring a bell.
You can call it that going forward regardless.
It doesn't mean we, yeah, doesn't mean we can't call it that.
Gonna create one, because I think we just had several meetings because of the ASAP project.
Yeah, maybe I just had ASAP on the brain and didn't coordinate it, but as long as your peers would, uh, agree with that concept, we'll put that on the list, Derek.
And I know Carolyn expressed an interest in participating again.
Carolyn Tucker you're talking about?
Yes, uh, from the CDLE.
Yep.
And who's the other, uh, Jerry? No. I can't remember his name and that's embarrassing.
Oh.
Yeah.
I can't remember.
It's neither here nor there, but we, I think we can find some more participants.
Is everybody good with that, with reestablishing the economic development?
I mean, apart from, I see we can start from the chamber to participate.
Yes, and I know you.
Would it be nice if they did?
Yes.
The many conversations that need to happen with the chamber, that will be one of them.
Perfect, okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay.
I think that's enough subcommittees.
Let's roll.
Okay. Uh, next up is the twenty twenty-three financial report and I will turn this over to Administrator Lehman this week.
Well, that's my job this time because Treasurer Tucker is off at a conference this week, she went down to CML to support the town uh, down there and represent us. So, uh, I'm not gonna get into great, great detail unless you have questions, but I do want to point out that our sales tax for May contin- uh, continues to, to increase. I think the shopping online is still strong. And, and our, uh, our Discover Silk program, which we're gonna, uh, bring up just at the end of the meeting, to talk a little bit about it, but it, I think that Discover Silk program will aim to continue to encourage folks to, to shop from their couch as well as supporting, uh, our local businesses, so we'll tell you a little bit more about that in a bit, but I think we're, we are still seeing strong, uh, online shopping as well as retail in town. Uh, so, and if I turn the page and look at the monthly financial cash flow report, uh, you'll see that our, uh, revenue is generally strong and ahead of the forty-one percent of the year that's elapsed. And I know that's not a, a great marker, but it is, uh, just a, a kind of a barometer, the first blush barometer that we look at. And then, uh, our expenditures, uh, are, are obviously under control. And then the current fund balances are strong and getting stronger. Any questions? I could use this.
I don't have any, no.
I could use this time to, uh, to let you know that we are, have established our budget calendar. I don't think we've given that to you yet, but we are work, starting to work on that. You don't have that yet, do you?
I don't see it, at least I don't remember.
Um, we, I think July tenth, we had, uh, initially scheduled on there to have a kind of a break the ice program or party with you all, let you know what's coming. We did have a conver- have had several conversations about a few things we want to do a little bit differently this year. We're gonna try not to be so repetitive. Which the staff will love, right?
Of course.
Yeah, you gotta agree with me when I put it that way. Uh, but we will, um, kind of look at a little bit newer, newer way of doing it and maybe do a little deeper dive into a few things that we've, uh, that we've, that we understand may, uh, be needed, so.
Okay.
Any questions? Finance, budgets? I, I sense a question coming from Derek.
It was me, actually. You said some, yes, uh, I just had questions about the SeaSafe. Okay, so what's their structure for SeaSafe? Are they FDIC or do they have any?
SeaSafe and.
What kind of securities?
SeaSafe and Call Trust are two very similar organizations. That, uh, they, and perhaps it'd be a good idea to get th- them to come in and do a dog and pony presentation.
It's just what's happening with the phone.
What it is they do, because they obviously know it better than I do. But they accept a government, basically local government funds.
Okay.
And then they turn around and invest those in exceedingly safe. Most, you know, a lot of government bonds and so forth and so on. Their return rate over the last several years, maybe three or so years, was virtually zero. They were better than banks, but they weren't much better and now they're, uh, finally, we're sta- starting to see some real returns with them. And of course, we have inflation to, to thank for that, but they are doing a lot better. And we have moved some money into, um, SeaSafe, a considerable amount of money uh, from one of our local banks to SeaSafe, because the, the returns were just that much better.
Yeah, because it's my understanding that, uh, some banks will be, public funds will be held under a PDPA status, which pretty much means that that's security for those funds. And then with the current economic climate, it would be wise for us to keep an eye on that as a board, uh, to make sure that we are making sounding decisions of, you know, where we're keeping most of the funds from the public. Not to put any disbelief in SeaSafe or anything like that or cause, I mean, but this was in the back of my mind to ask those questions and, uh, maybe have the presentations and have a list in a year on those types of, you know, investments that they're using and, uh.
I can, I can get a list.
If you guys agree with it, that was just.
It's always good to have an update, cause it's been a little while, so.
It's been, it's been a few years.
And interest rates are changing a lot, or have changed a lot.
Yes.
And I don't know if it's something that we can even throw an RFP out there to see if they're bad, because a lot of banks, no, I mean, I, that might not be the right, uh, point, but some banks have raised the interest rate because of the competition that's happening in Denmark. So I called it an RFP, but I don't know if I'm calling the right name, but you get where I'm coming from. So we could potentially be getting more of that money and potentially be choosing another secure option to, maybe through, I don't know.
Commercial banks really don't compete well with
Okay.
these two organizations. Um, but again, I would, you know, conditions change, obviously. And my information might be so yesterday, so. But we will, will, I, I think, uh, you know, the mayor, uh, kind of seconded the idea of maybe having uh, these guys come in and give a quick spiel, so we'll, we'll, we'll put that on a future agenda and have. And, and our, um, relationship with, uh, Call Trust is a little newer, I believe, than SeaSafe, so, uh, you know, we'll just, maybe we'll let them both come in and talk. But again, for diversification, we wanted to kind of spread it around to both those organizations. And most of the money you see in the local, uh, bank here is, um, you know, kind of liquid funds for operations. So we can move those around quickly when we need them. And I should say too, that, uh, both SeaSafe and, and Call Trust, if we need those funds, like for an emergency or something, it's a one-day request that we would get the money, so. It's not like it's, these aren't locked up in a ninety-day or hundred-and-eighty-day, um, you know, instrument.
Excellent, okay, thank you, Jeff.
You bet.
All right, if there's nothing else, we'll jump over to Administrator and Staff comments.
I don't have anything to add at this point.
I do, um, our violation that we had for fail, failed to meet backflow assembly testing compliance is on the website, it's posted at Town Hall. It has to go out with all the bills that will be mailed out for the July water bill. So you'll be seeing that with your water bill. And then July tenth, we will start our lead and copper testing. And that's the one that we have to have the residents take the sample for us. So the bottles will be distributed on July tenth, instructions are in it. Tells you how to take the sample and then call Town Hall and we'll either come pick it up or bring it into Town Hall and we'll get it sent off where it needs to go for samples. And Eagles View Park is open, it's completely done.
Yeah.
How many samples do you have to do?
Twenty, lead and copper, up from ten.
That got a little more difficult.
Yes.
Okay. Nicole, since you're with us, you got anything?
Um, I did want to mention, since the chamber had been brought up so many times tonight, they are partnering with us to do the Beer Garden for Farmers Market. Even though we're not members anymore, they still wanted to help out with whatever events they could of ours. So I did want to throw that out there, because I think that that intention is worth mentioning.
Is there a reason why we're not a mi- a member anymore?
Uh, we didn't feel that we got anything from being a member.
Okay.
But they could all, they could obviously change, obviously for that, and they want to get more involved with other things and we can re-debrief about you.
You're right, yep.
The chamber seems to be always morphing and evolving for the last ten years, so.
Okay.
They have a new, they have a new ED.
Yeah.
They do.
I, I've not met her, but I've heard good things about her.
I did meet with her and she, I think is gonna do some good stuff, so.
Okay.
Between her and Larry, I think they've got a good
Good.
A-team putting a forefront with the chamber now.
Would it, you know, be off the question to try and build on that relationship and have and see what kind of feedback we really do have? and see what kind of feedback we really do have and see if they are really willing to invest more? To reopen the conversation, basically, that's what I'm saying.
The conversation, I think, is always there. I think the gestures on their end will mean a lot to seeing what the future brings.
Budget season's a good time to talk about that.
Yeah.
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 In full disclosure, I, I sent them a strategy document, like here are the things you could do to help rebuild that relationship with the Town of Silk. So I think the next conversation is, what have they taken from that list and executed on?
Yeah.
You think the answer's gonna be nothing, or?
Well, we haven't got much response, I don't know.
What are our expectations? Like, would you be willing to share, have maybe Jeff share as an email to see what some of those expect, the expectations were and then try to reopen the conversation? Because I just came back to the board, so I don't have, I don't know.
And I sent you a copy of the document that I sent to Larry, and it was, I think, and I don't remember the young lady's name, so I apologize for that. She had been working there for, I think, two or three days. Like she had literally just started the job, so I didn't expect her to turn it around that quickly. But I think it's worth reviewing that list at some point in the near future and maybe following up with her and Larry.
Okay.
And if they.
Looking back, I think it's probably a good idea for uh, us to share that with the rest of the board, even if it's just a document on the back of a packet.
Agreed, agreed.
We can.
And if, if the chamber can't meet our expectations, I, it's, it's time to look for a Plan B. We can't continue to wait for them to be responsive when they continue to not be. And I have some thoughts on that, but I'm not gonna bog us down tonight with them. I think it, I think we should have that as an agenda item at the next meeting, though.
Okay.
How can we reengage the chamber, and if not them, what else?
Okay.
Well, the board um, during the budget process last year, decided to redirect those funds from uh, the chamber to a different effort, which uh, we'll, we'll, we're calling Discover Silk Colorado.
Discover, oh.
And we've been working with Align Multimedia for some months to kinda get that off the ground, and we're starting to see some. I keep getting dribs and drabs of this, Derek, I don't know if you noticed, but uh, so we are, we are working on that. But I, I think it's a good idea to, you know, try to uh, continue to uh, reengage the chamber as well.
And businesses like chambers, so as part of a driver for business is having a robust chamber presence um, in the Town of Silk. You know, going back to our numerous earlier discussions about economic development and business development and balance, part of that is having chamber representation so that they have advocacy when they get here. That, that I feel is our responsibility, is to foster that ecosystem. Whether it's through this chamber or some other means, Discover Silk, whatever the case may be, we need to do something.
Correct.
Cause right now a business shows up and says, what's next? And we go, I don't know, get customers. Good luck. That's not, that's not a good answer. It just isn't.
But for many years, that was the answer when we were involved with the chamber.
Yes, and that, that's why we're, again, there, there are alternates. I, I, again, I don't wanna get bogged down in the details, but.
Yeah.
Have, we have options now that we didn't have then, and I think continuing to do nothing is unacceptable.
Yes, and I think everybody that's sitting here is willing to do something, to continue to push forward. And I think it's important to focus on solutions. And uh, you know, when you, when you focus on solutions, then you just get ahead a lot quicker. Because problems, there's plenty. There are plenty reasons why you're not doing something. But then if you just keep your move, moving forward towards that clear vision, towards that goal, then you're just working through pro- problems one at a time, and then you, you, that's how you make it. I, I adopt days in my personal life, my professional life, and I deal with problems like all, all day, every day. And my job is to solve problems, and our job is to solve problems so that we can offer the service as the board for the Town of Silk. So let's continue solving those problems and pushing forward and making things happen. That's it.
Sounds like a plan.
Do you wanna talk about other stuff relating to Discover Silk?
I was gonna let you kick it off and launch it.
Sounds good.
Well, is it staff comments or is it updates from the board?
Staff comments.
Currently, we're stealing staff comments.
Sorry, we interrupted you guys. I did that. I do that all the time. I'm sorry.
But if we're good with staff, we can go to board.
Derek, it's on you.
It's up to the mayor to choose who goes next.
Well, you seem to have something to talk about tonight, so.
Okay, so comments. First, I wanna say thanks to Nicole and Dusty and the events team. Um, the Friday night movies in the park have started and they were great. The first music event up at Pavilion Park was last week, two hundred and seventy-three people.
Correct.
Did I get it right this time?
Yes.
No short-term memory loss here. Uh, that's a great showing for the first one of the season. Um, Farmers Market is getting started and obviously you'll be involved in that too and driving that process. Glad to hear that the chamber is gonna be participating. Um, the other thing, Discover Silk, there are brochures and stickers that the town administrator will now be handing out.
I already got one. I was at music on Friday.
Did you get a sticker?
Yes, I got both. Nicole handed them to me personally.
To help, help us get the word out about it. Um, a big piece of the progress on the Discover website, Discover Silk website has been Align Multimedia, and I wanna make sure that I give them credit.
I love this.
Katie and, and the whole team have been great to work with on um, projects, one of which I'll talk about in a minute, but a lot of the creative work as well. Um, I haven't been responding to the email threads directly. I've been leaving that to Jeff and or Nicole. But they're doing great work. They're doing it quickly. Uh, no complaints here at all. Um, we've got some videos. Uh, Whimsical Wagon was the first video to launch. That's done. Um, the next one is going to be Wild Coffee, formerly Misty's Coffee. Um, I don't have an E T A on that. If you do, feel free to chime in with it.
The introduction email happened today, so I think once they connect, it will be decided.
Happening quick. So Align Multimedia is doing those as well. Um, and last but certainly not least is we have a photo contest that's gonna be launching. Do you know the date of that off the top of your head?
It's gonna launch, the first email's gonna go out through the post tomorrow.
Brilliant. Um, so that's gonna be done not just through the post. We've also got the Citizen Telegram participating as a partner in that. So thanks to both of them for partnering with us on it. It's also gonna launch across all the uh, social media channels. And the idea is people submit their best photographs um, from around the larger Silk area. And then once they have a certain period of time to do that, we're then gonna have a vote on which one people like the best. So we're trying to drive clicks and views. Um, and then the top three photos, as selected by that group, are gonna get awards. And it's a combination of local town businesses and some other things that they're gonna get, but it's gonna be worth their time to submit their photos and participate. So I'm super excited to see what our, what our clicks and our views are um, on that contest. Those are just some of the things that we're trying to do to grow the visibility of the Town of Silk.
Things outstanding.
And yeah, I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing the clicks, both for the launch and how many picture submissions we get. Um, at the next meeting, I will plan to have some data for y'all, so that y'all know.
Okay.
And thanks again to Nicole, who in addition to rewriting our code, has been doing all of these things and managing a team and is up at the concerts on stuff on Friday nights.
Team effort.
Can't thank you enough for all your effort.
And, and do go on the website and click on the Whimsical Wagon uh, video. It's only about three minutes, I think, or so, and it's, it's very well done and uh, it's, it's pretty cool. You might even recognize some people in there. I'm not sure, but likely.
It's professional work.
Yeah, really is. And we'll be looking forward to uh, Wild Coffee.
Yes.
And that's it.
Okay. Well, that's awesome.
We're making progress.
Okay. And we'll go to Trustee Seifert.
Um, wanna thank Trey. Got a lot of asphalt down repairing pots in the street. What is our schedule? Uh, what are we looking at for like Grand and Sixteenth, some of them potholes?
The, the potholes?
Yeah.
Probably in the next couple of weeks. Now that we got that park done, we'll be catching up on some other things that got pushed off while we was doing the park.
Okay. I just had a couple people ask, like the one on Sixteenth by the ditch there, you're gonna try and dig a little more out and try and dig that?
Yeah, I tried to patch it.
Patch it and stuff, so, okay. Yeah, that was my only thing. Other than that, thanks everybody. We got a lot accomplished tonight.
All right. Trustee Clausen?
Um, I had a question on the Grand Avenue rebuild. What's the progress on that?
We are in engineering. We've got it surveyed from, what is that, Pioneer to Ninth Street? So we have the survey done and I need to get an update from Derek, but I know it's an engineer and the amount we're budgeting, we'll probably get like two blocks maybe with the four hundred thousand and depending on grants to what we can do, so.
Nice, yeah.
Yeah, it's moving, it's moving. You're not, you're not gonna see anything real quick out on the streets, but it is getting done behind the scenes, so to speak.
Nice. All right, thank you.
And we met last week on all of our uh, capital, our five-year capital program, capital improvement program. Um, that, we got a couple, couple years on there for looking down the road. You know, it's gonna take a while to get the whole street done.
Yeah.
At the rate that we think we can do it.
Well, every little bit helps. You know, I mean, it might be slow, but you know, eventually it'll, it'll get done, so.
That's right.
Good. And then I, I, I saw on Third Street, all that mess was cleaned up with all those trailers and everything, so that looks, that looks good. So thank you and thank, you know, thank all the town staff for all the work they do and keep up a good job and that's it.
Okay. Trustee Poston?
I'll just echo what Chris said. Thank you to all the town staff for all the har- hard work. I like all the efforts that we are making to uh, retake all those committees and continue on with the master plans and some of the plans that we had initiated and hopefully seen it all the way through to completion. Um, I wanna say thank you for each one of you for being here and then spending your energy and time and intelligent efforts uh, to bring solutions. In order to find, to find solutions, you have to find the problem, so we all bring so many different things uh, to this board. And I just wanna say that each one of you, it's very, very much appreciated in your unique manner.
Trustee Forrest?
No, nothing.
Trustee Britton?
I'd echo about, what Trustee Henry or Pro Tim Henry said about the concert, especially with Country Jam going on, a lot of other stuff going on in the area. It was a good turnout and everybody up there was really enjoying themselves, having fun, so I liked seeing those events. Um, and then just again, remember it's summertime, slow down, just 'cause nobody else has said that yet today, so. Um, just remember, there's lots of kids out running around playing, doing stuff. And then if you see people doing something stupid, as far as like any kind of vandalism or noticing like that, contact the town immediately, let them know, and they can get it either cleaned up or taken care of. We can just try to not have as, as much of that as possible in this town.
Okay. Uh, the only thing I've got is I've had two citizens reach out to me and wonder why we're doing a turf replacement program when we're allowing people to water seven days a week. Um, they both stated that they have called Town Hall and reported these people and that nothing is ever done about it. So, um, just for anybody listening, we have special watering days. So water on your day for your amount of time only. Doesn't do any good for one person to be following the rules when the next person's running their sprinkler constantly, so. Um, and then I also had a citizen reach out uh, and wanted to express her thanks for the board and all the time we've put into the uh, water treatment plant and how we're being thorough through all the steps and not rushing through anything. Uh, as an elderly woman, she really appreciates uh, that effort that we're putting into it and wanted the board to know, so. Other than that, I've got nothing else. We do have an executive session tonight, so I don't know if we wanna take a break or just jump right into it.
Jump into it and get it done.
Yeah, keep doing.
I'm gonna jump out and use the restroom real quick while I'm just getting things switched on.
Okay, wait till we make, can you wait till we make the motion and we go into executive session?
Sure.
Okay. Uh, so I moved to go into the executive session for a discussion of a personnel matter under C R S section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four F, uh, Jeff Lehman's performance evaluation. Do you guys like to second that motion?
I'll second that.
All right. Uh, Mayor, um, the mayor made a motion to go into executive session uh, for the stated purpose, executed by Trustee Clausen. All is in favor.
Aye.
Aye. All in favor. Motion carries unanimously. Take a couple minutes to get set up here.